Welcome back everyone, I'm Tom Murphy and this is Trinidad Now on TTV, Trinidad Times Television, Channel 71 on our local cable channel and on Trinidad Times TV 71 on YouTube. With me today is longtime city council member Joe Bonato. Joe, thank you for joining me.
Thank you Mr. Murphy for having me this morning.
Okay, Joe, we're gonna start today, you're my first interview in a little while so it's gonna be a little tricky, but we're gonna start as I told you just a moment ago, we're gonna start with some general questions and background questions and we'll go from there. But let's start with your personal background. Tell me about yourself, where you were born, where you've lived, educated, your spouse, your number of children, that type of information.
Sure, I'd be glad to Tom. I was born and raised right here in Trinidad, Colorado. I was born in 1954. I was married to my wife Jeanette Bonato, Wildy Garbo. We're gonna have an anniversary of 41 years here pretty soon in February. We were blessed with two children, Mary Jo Bodino and Martin Bonato. I came from a little coal camp from Sopris where my dad and my father and my grandfather were all miners up there. We moved to Trinidad in 1963, I believe it was. My mother passed away in 1965. My father worked for the city of Trinidad at the plant for a number of years before his retirement. I love this little city, I can't picture myself anywhere else and I wanna stay here in Trinidad.
Cool. Tell me about some of your past public involvement. As I recall, correct me if I'm wrong here, you were previously elected two for your terms?
Yes sir.
Then you sat off for four years.
Yes sir.
You were elected again and then you were elected again to a four-year term.
Right.
So, and now, the charter was changed a few years ago. Before, when you were on council, you couldn't run. Now, you have two years left on a second four-year term, is that correct?
Right, yes sir, I'll be term limited after two years. When I decided to run for mayor, if I don't win the mayorship, I would still retain my seat on council for another two years. So, you know, either way, I'm still on council or I'll be elected as the new mayor.
Okay, okay. So, Joe, you're already on council.
Right.
Why run for mayor?
You know, a lot of people has asked me that, Tom, in the past year and I think we gotta have more transparency between the council and the people of the city of Trinidad. A lot of people have approached me and I ask them, well, come to council meetings, it's very important that you come to council meetings. And a lot of them has told me, well, we're not gonna go to council meetings because the council's gonna do what they wanna do, or if we do go to council meetings, we're scared to speak up because retaliation from something else from the council. And I think a lot of people know how I am, the people that backed me, they know how I feel and they know that I wanna listen to them. I wanna, I wanna know what the people of the city of Trinidad want and what we need. Not what Joe Bonato needs, not what the city council needs, not like that, but what they need in our town. So I think that's really the main reason I ran for mayor.
Okay, you know, I've been filming since 2005 and I agree with you, one of the problems with council is they're intimidated. A lot of people are intimidated, but I don't, I don't think that our city council is unique in that way, whether it's school board or county commission. Public speaking generally is hard for people.
Right.
And certainly, coming to city council and expressing their views is difficult. So, help me a little bit more, it's just, it's just because people are afraid to speak and you wanna help them by being more engaging?
Yeah, really, really, Tom, like I say, we have to pack the council chambers all the time, we have to get the people there first. And we have to build up their confidence where they could come in and say, yeah, I'm gonna go up to the podium. I might be a little nervous, but I'm, you know, the council's gonna see us as what I am. You know, I just wanna, you know, I want people to speak, you know. I get nervous speaking, I've been sitting on city council for a long time and I know how it is to speak in a public forum, but we just, you know, I think like the people, they trust me, they know they're, they could come to council meetings and say, you know, what they wanna say. I think a three-minute limit is too short for people to talk. And five minutes?
I think we put it at five, I mean, I pressed for that.
Right, we went to five and I, and you know, I, I really would stress a little bit more for, for what they could, they bring out, but you know, after they start repeating, repeating, then I would say to stop it, but you know, I don't think five minutes is an allotment for our people to speak.
Okay. This was gonna be one of my last questions, but I'm gonna shift this.
Okay.
Well, here's the first part of this. So, as the mayor, what can you do, Joe, to encourage people to show up? Because right now, my take on it is that a lot of people, not just at the city level and the state level and the national level, there's a lot of apathy. And actually, right now, as we were just talking about before the meeting, there's a lot of anger out there.
That's right.
How, how can you, you know, as the mayor and that you're not doing as a council member, how can you pack the chambers?
I think the most important thing about that, Tom, is trust. And, and I believe that the people that backed me and follow me have a lot of trust in me. And I think that the other people, you know, that have different opinions of myself or whatever, they have to come and say, you know, maybe Mr. Bonato is right, you know, we're not, we're not, we're gonna speak our, our piece and, and see what he says and that, you know, I'll be willing to listen. And that's, that's the most important part, is more communication between the council and, and the community, so.
Okay.
I think that's the way I could do it, that.
Well, Joe, maybe patting myself a little bit on the back, but since we, I started filming and putting this on television, it kind of removed the need for people to be there.
Right.
You know, with the newspapers and everything, and we had newspaper for a while, it's one thing to read a quote from somebody, what they say, but it's entirely different to be able to watch it.
That's right.
So, and this is how I was gonna wrap it up though, but do you think that my filming and putting this on television on the weekends has helped council?
Well, absolutely, Tom, and I appreciate you doing this because with the elderly people that we have in our town, they can't get out sometimes. And, you know, we, we gotta look at our senior citizens and say, hey, you're important to us.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter if, you know, who I'm speaking to or whatever, but you're, but you putting this on TV where the elderly and our senior citizens could see this, it's a great plus for us, it really is. Because they're, those are the people that really have made this town and really have to know what's going on in council.
Well, I think our older citizens here are really the base of the voters.
That's right, absolutely.
And, and so, have you had comments from them that they've seen things and watched and said, hey, and talked to you about it?
Well, a lot of people would call me, some people would call me and say, you know, Mr. Bonato, we watched you on TV the other night and you had some good, good remarks on what was going on and, and like I say, it's important to them, so I think you're doing a fabulous job on it, you know, and keep it on, we have to keep this going.
Yeah, I'm just looking for some compliments.
Yeah, no, I think you're doing good, yeah.
My personal feeling is I think it's made a big difference.
Absolutely.
Because I know how people were treated before and now how they're treated, but so sticking on this theme here though, there really isn't much difference between being a council member and a mayor. And, and so, there's three things, and so let me just say this, the, in reading the charter, the only thing that the mayor does differently is they set the agenda, number one.
Right.
Number two, they run the meetings.
Right.
And number three, they sign the legal documents. Other than that, you know, in setting the agenda, you and any other council member can, you know, get together and put something on the agenda.
Right.
So, I guess my question is this, Joe, to me, other than those three things, setting the agenda, running the meeting and signing documents, there's really not much difference between that and being a council member. So, how, again, maybe I'm repeating myself, how would be, being the mayor be any different from being a council member?
Well, you know, like I tell you, is the mayor doesn't have no more power than the councilman. I mean, we're still about the same level of action there, but becoming a mayor, you know, this has probably been my, my dream since I'd been in, in politics, running for the, for a city council. I failed two times on running for mayor, but I think it's time now that I step up and say, I'm ready to be the mayor, I'm ready to lead this community. And like you said, there's no difference between a councilman and a mayor, but I think me as sitting as a mayor, I could do a lot more, I really can.
Okay. Joe, if you were to win, two things may happen. Number one, we're gonna have a seat open.
Right.
Which means then that the council, instead of the voters, well, then you guys will have to appoint somebody to fulfill.
Absolutely.
I think it would probably only be for one year, I don't think they would, I'm not sure if they'd fill out the one year or your two-year term.
Right.
So that creates a dilemma, and if the council can't agree, I just lost my connection on one of my things here, let me try, hopefully I'll start up again. If the council can't agree, then you have to have a special election. So you might be putting a burden on the voters if council can't agree to have a special election. So that to me would be two of the negatives, how would you address that?
Well, I think, you know, Tom, that, I think that situation went back when I believe we appointed Mr. Matei, I think, for, for a seat, I think if I'm right. You know, it just depends who gets in there. I mean, as far as, you know, there's rumors going around that if Joe Bonato gets mayor and certain council members get in with Joe Bonato, that we're gonna close down all the marijuana shops in Trinidad, and I wanna put to rest that. If I had that much power, I'd be in Washington DC instead of Trinidad, so that's just a rumor that's going on and I want people to know that. But, yeah, it could, I don't think it would be a problem because I think the council, whoever gets in there, whoever gets in there would be willing to appoint a certain person that's qualified to sit in my seat.
Okay, okay. Well, the one, one thing that you brought up, Joe, was marijuana.
Right.
So, the elephant in the room everywhere really is marijuana. So, not that I don't already know, but not everybody watching does, but what is your stance on marijuana?
Well, it's like I told you, Tom, when this all came up about four years ago, I guess it was, three or four years ago, I wasn't against medical marijuana coming into the city of Trinidad, because I believe that medical marijuana could help people with stage IV cancer or, or people with epilepsy or stuff like that. I wasn't really against it then, but then what happened is that we, as a council, wanted to go and set five people to open, open shops in marijuana in Trinidad here. I myself thought maybe, maybe two was good enough, because our population is dwindling, it's 8,000 people or less now, and that's what kinda got my, my wheels turning and saying, hey, wait a minute. So then we went from five, we went to the lottery, and then we opened to everybody and the floodgates just opened.
Mm-hmm.
And now what transpires, now look what we have, we have maybe 27 outlets, we have grow facilities, and I think people just, and that's another reason I'm running for mayor, I think people just had enough, we have too many for the population size that we have.
But Joe, let me interrupt here real quick.
Sure.
Now though, for the people, we do have a cap, don't we?
Yes, we have a cap, yes sir.
Okay, and how many stores do we have currently?
I think it's about 20.
There's not 20 open, and I don't even know for sure myself how many are open right now, I've lost.
I really don't, not right off the tip of my head, Tom, I really don't, but with the growth facilities and stuff like that, it's, it's quite a few there.
Okay.
It's quite a few.
But, but there is a cap.
There is a cap right now set in place.
Okay, so, so let's think about this, just like whether any other business, you know, in America, there's free market.
Right.
And you survive or you don't.
That's right.
One of the things that, that has happened is that some of these buildings, and I have a building that's 131 years old, I probably not gonna live long enough to pay it off, but I've redone everything here and it's expensive. One of the things that we've gotten out of this is a lot of these buildings have been fixed up. And with the free market, not all of them probably are gonna survive.
That's right.
So isn't there some benefit to the fact that, that we've gotten these buildings fixed up for whatever our next boom and bust is?
Well, yeah, there is, and you know, like I say, marijuana's here, it's here to state. You know, we had $1.7 million in, in tax that came back from the state. Yeah, there is, and like I say, we just have to watch and have, just have more regulations on this. Maybe we have to hire an MED officer or we're gonna have to hire a couple officers more to have more regulations on these buildings. I'm not saying people are doing things illegal, but we have to regulate and have maybe an officer go in, whatever, check these stores. If they're doing things right, no problem. If they're to have a problem, doing something illegal, then they get a fine or whatever on purpose of that. But you are correct, we have a lot of buildings that, that are fixed up. I could go on with art space and everything like that with that question.
Right, that's, that's gonna come in another segment.
Right.
Two more questions and we'll wrap it up. Since I haven't done this in a while, I don't wanna drag on too long, but what should we do about the panhandlers and the homeless?
Well, we as the council and the mayor have discussed this on a regular basis and, you know, Tom, it's really a touchy subject. I mean, there's not really, really too much that we could do about it because the law protects them quite a bit, you know. A gentleman could be sitting down there on, at the miners memorial, sitting on a bench, and a police officer come and say, you, you know, you're loitering, you have to move. Well, that, that guy there, the gentleman could get up and walk down the street, come back five minutes later and sit on the bench, so it's really a touchy subject, Tom. There's been talk about, you know, trying to make a shelter for him over here at the Holy Trinity convent, but you know, that takes so much money and it takes so much, it's really a problem and I don't know how to, how to really address that.
Let me just interject this, in doing a little bit of research on homeless, to me, what I found out is that it's not just a Trinidad problem, it's not a Denver problem, it's worldwide.
That's right.
I think it was Anthony Matei that told me, he came out of the Vatican and there are people right there, you know, insisting on handouts.
That's right.
So, I think you're probably right, I'm not sure that there is a good solution right now.
Well, not, you know, not all panhandlers are homeless and not all homeless people are panhandlers.
Right.
So you gotta look at it at both ways, you know. I hear that sometimes Colorado Springs at one time were buying tickets to, for these homeless people and say, here you go, here's your ticket, go south. Now, I don't know how true this is, but if we look at the, at the number and increasing number of homeless people that we have, yeah, it could be true. It's just, it's a sad situation where our little seniors or my wife or your wife goes, I won't let my wife go to Safeway by herself anymore, or Walmart and stuff like that. And it's kind of a sad situation, but it's touchy.
But also, we live in a small town, so there's, you know, some benefits and we know each other, but if we were in Denver, you definitely probably wouldn't, so it's bad, but it's not horrible.
Right.
And they just need our help.
Yeah, they do, they do.
And I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer.
You know, I feel sorry for them, you know.
I don't have the answer either, I just know, there were a couple, there was a gentleman that spoke at the county commission last week, that they're squatting out on his land on Model and, and he ended up getting arrested and his partner, which to me is a complete travesty that they get away with that.
We did, we did have a woman come to city council a couple of weeks ago and she spoke about the homeless people and, you know, it, like I say, it's a sad situation, but what's, what's, what can we do about it?
Well, let me interject this, isn't this maybe, you know, we have a lot of Christian churches and, and part of Jesus' teaching is, you know, to take care.
Help them out, that's right.
So maybe, maybe this is just a time for, for those of us that profess to be Christians to engage.
That's right.
But I know like Howard Lackey in particular did a bit of research and frankly, I'm interjecting here now, I guess, but Howard said, you know, from his interviews with these people, that this is a business to them, they've got trailers and cars and everything else.
That's what I heard too, I don't know, so, yeah.
It's a dilemma.
And the way the world's going, you know, you look at all the fires, the floods, the hurricanes and stuff like that, and you know, you just talked about God, there, you know, maybe he's trying to tell us, change our ways.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe.
But all through history, there's been conflicts and wars and everything else. One last question before we take a break, how much time do you plan on devoting to being on city council?
Well, you know, Tom, I'm disabled, I have a severe back injury and I, I could actually spend a lot of time with, with, with city council and being a mayor. I'm always open, I'm, I'm home, people know my phone number, I could do what, you know, what my body could take. My legs sometimes get weak, but I'm sitting down, but there's nothing wrong with my mind, so, yeah, you know, I, like I told you before, I, I will dedicate myself to being a mayor.
Okay, and actually, that, that made me think of something else. Joe, there's been a number of times where you've had to stand up and whatnot because you're in pain. Is it possible that that might interfere with your running meetings, that you are in so much pain that you really can't conduct the meeting?
I don't think so. Like I say, I, I served under a lot of good councilmen and a lot of good mayors, Tom, and I have learned a lot from them and they have been very patient with me as far as with my injury, they know my statics on this, but no, I, you know, like Mr. Rico told me, Mr. Bonato, you're, you're willing, you can stand up and whatever there. And I don't think I have any distractions, I, we just went to Fort Carson Thursday and the city manager drove me up, so it was, it don't bother me, you know.
Okay, alright, Joe, we're gonna wrap up this segment and we're gonna come back in a few minutes for another one.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tom Murphy and this is Trinidad Now on TTV 71 on YouTube. And if you're watching right now, you're probably on YouTube anyway, so you know where we're at. But with me today is current mayor Phil Rico, lifelong resident of Trinidad and running for mayor. And Phil, let me explain, we're gonna break this into a few different categories, we're gonna start with the first segment here and then we'll take a break, it's gonna be general questions about yourself, then we're gonna go into economic development and then management on city manager and management of council and a few other things. And then we'll wrap it up and you can say what you want to the council. But let's just, let's start with the easy stuff this morning, and that is, tell me about yourself, your personal background, where were you born, where have you lived, educated, spouses, names and number of children?
Well, I was born and raised in Weston, 1951, went to school at Primero, graduated from Primero, went to college, Trinidad State Junior College for a couple of years, met my wife. We got married, we ended up staying here in Trinidad and worked at a couple of different jobs, ended up staying at Trinidad Builder Supply, which is what I'm still, I'm still there. We have two children, we have two grandchildren and one great-grandchild.
Oh wow.
So, that's kind of the basics of my background of where I was born and raised.
Right.
And just, I decided to stay in Trinidad because I love Trinidad, it's been a good, it's been good for me. I've been able to make a living, make a decent living and I appreciate that.
Well, cool. Your past public involvement, were you, I mean, what are some of the things, I know that you're part of the Trinidad Community Foundation, those types of things, what have been your, your past public involvement?
Well, it goes back probably 30, 35 years ago, I was a part of the, I joined the Trinidad JACs when it was still here, that goes way back. I was also the, with those, I work for Los Angeles Housing Resources, that used to, that was about in 2000, 2004 timeframe, I was president as well as on that board for, until they closed down. I was on the advisory board of the Trinidad State Junior College Building Trades for about 18 years. I was president for the Trinidad Community Foundation for, I think, four years. There's been other smaller things that I've been involved with, but those have been probably the major things that I've been involved with. But I just have had a good sense of wanting to do something for my community for the past 30, 35 years.
Right.
I've been married with my wife for 46 years actually now.
Okay.
So I've, so I've had a lot of community involvement.
Right.
Through those years.
But born and raised and lifelong resident?
Born and raised, yes, lifelong resident of Trinidad, never left.
Right, well, I, I can understand why, I mean, I came to visit and I'm still here. I've, I've lived in places where the heat and humidity kill you. Some people don't realize how good we have it.
That's true, we have, you know, we, I always say this, we have the best of all worlds, we have all four seasons, we gotta get a little bit of heat, a little bit of cold, but nothing to the extreme. And that's what I appreciate about living here in Trinidad. You can get from, we're in Trinidad in just a few minutes, if you wanna get to the mountains, you're there in, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes, so we have the best of a lot of worlds, I think, here.
We do, I agree with that. Some of the questions I'm gonna ask, it may seem redundant as we go along here, I'm looking at the next one and you may answer, it's just maybe just a different take on it, but what, Phil, is the reason you ran once and you, and you won, but what's your reason for running for office?
You know, Trinidad is in a good place right now. There's a lot of momentum that's been building over the last pretty, pretty much two to three years, and we need to continue on that path and I think, I'm not I think, but I know that I feel like I'm the right person, because I, my personality, I'm pretty stable with my everyday life, I'm stable with my attitude, I try to be fair to everybody and, you know, I want to see Trinidad achieve what it can possibly achieve while I'm here. It's probably, it's gonna take longer than that, but I wanna at least start to set the basis, for help set the basis. I'm not gonna do it myself, there are other, you know, six council people that are with me, plus all the residents in this community, all have a part in it. We have a great number of people that participate in all our boards and commissions and they do a tremendous job for us, and I think without them, Trinidad probably would not be where we're at today.
Right.
So I have to hand it to them, you know, to the people that volunteer on a daily basis, we have a tremendous, I think there's something like 80, I think 80-something volunteers that are what I call hardcore volunteers, volunteers, and they do a tremendous job for Trinidad.
With, with all the volunteers and everything and things heading in the right direction, this is a little bit off, off script, but what we had before oil and gas was some high paying jobs. And now, with, say, the marijuana industry, they're not as high paying. Do you see from your business a change as far as dialing down of what's happening or are things just continuing to grow?
You know, I, what I've been seeing is just with everything that's happening in Trinidad, I see growth. I see good steady growth and I don't see any reason why we cannot continue on that path. The marijuana industry, like I said, it's brought in some jobs, but what's interesting is we are seeing a lot of people move, not for the marijuana necessarily, but I think they're looking for quality of life. And one of the things that I would like to attract here are those jobs of the millenniums that they don't need to have a storefront to go to. But I'm seeing the growth that I think that is needed for our community right now. And it's, it's a slow growth and I think that's, if you have too much explosive growth, it can actually hurt a community, so I think slow growth is good.
Okay. The elephant in the room in the community for the last several years, of course, has been marijuana. People for it, people against it. What is your stance on marijuana?
You know, I think marijuana's fine. The numbers that they started out with was, I thought, excessive and talking to, I think it was Carol Bolton and I think in some of the past people, you know, it started out with five, then it went to, I think, 15, and then it went to unlimited.
Actually, I think we did a lottery, they talked about a lottery.
Yes, yeah.
And then opened it up.
Then it went kinda crazy.
Because that was before your time, actually, that's right.
Yes, it was before my time. And, you know, when I got in there, I thought, there needs to be some control to this, because you know, you can always, just because there are more storefronts does not mean there's more, there's going to be more revenue coming in from that source.
Right.
Because you know, you can get one of too many, too much of one thing, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Because I've talked to somebody in another part of the state where they had probably fewer number, fewer number outlets that we had, but the same amount of revenue that we have. So that was interesting to me. So anyway, when I got in, one of the things that I did, the second uh, meeting that I chaired, I proposed a moratorium, which they had tried before. And the moratorium, it fell short. Uh, so at that time, city manager Gabe England, and I sat down and we said, okay, we, we do need to have some control of this because we know that these numbers are not sustainable over a long number of, of a long period of time. So what's the best avenue? So we thought, well, let's try to put a cap on this. Which is what ended up happening a little body, a little over a year ago.
Okay.
So that cap, I think, uh, helped in a lot of different ways. Uh, it, it allowed people to be able to see that there's something that's being done with the excessive numbers that we have. So the cap that we have, I think, is, will work over a period of time. And it's something that had to get placed because like I said, you cannot have excessive numbers of anything.
Right. Well, um, one of the things, as I said to Mr. Benauto this morning, one of the things that I see though, um, we have a free market and one of the nice things, and it's somebody who has put a lot of money into an old building. The thing that I see is um, that a lot of buildings that probably wouldn't have gotten fixed up.
True.
Um, you know, the electrical, the plumbing, things that in a free market, you know, will probably eh, just like the oil and gas, we're probably gonna bust at some point. If, if not bust, it's gonna certainly bring it back. Isn't there though, some positives at least to getting some of those buildings that have been touched?
Oh sure, it is because you know, some of these storefronts, we have like eighty historic buildings in town. And a lot of the buildings are, yeah, not, they, they're not in the core of Trinidad, but they're in some of the outline areas of that thousands, that thousand-foot perimeter that, that we have in place in the heart of Trinidad. And those buildings are getting uh, renovated. Uh, the other economic development that's going on is take, taking up some of these other buildings in the core of Trinidad. But you're right, you know, there are, uh, there is a good side to this as well. Uh, these buildings are being renovated to where uh, down the road, like, you know, when Gabe England and I were talking, we knew that this was not sustainable over, are we looking at two years, three years, five years where maybe uh, maybe other states may start opening this up? Uh, New Mexico, for instance. Uh, at that time, will, uh, we start to lose some of the um, uh, outlets here? Uh, will, will time just start taking care of some of that? We don't know. But we have to plan that, at that point in time, that we, you know, we have been able to do the best that we possibly can with the revenue that we've been able to, to, to gain on that.
Well, one of the things we'll talk about farther on is, you know, what are we gonna do maybe to fill in some of these buildings when people, you know, if, in anticipation that it busts and, you know, what we're gonna do to sustain, you know, some of the jobs and stuff here?
Well, I think one of the biggest things is that, like you mentioned earlier, you know, some of these buildings are getting renovated. And I think that's great. And what it will do is, as long as there's not any, um, I'm not sure how to exactly say this, but uh, any problems with, if let's say an existing building that had marijuana in it. And let's say someone moves in that they don't have to do anything excessive because of the marijuana, because this, is it, is it, is there gonna be some residue in there that has to get cleaned up? We don't know, be on, on the back end of this. Uh, kinda like the methane problems or the meth problems that are out there. I don't know if marijuana will have that same, maybe not that same impact, but will it have any impact like that at all? But it will allow where I think some of these buildings that are renovated to be up to date, to be up to code. So if we have another type of business that wants to move into one of these, one of these buildings, that it's there, ready to move in.
Right. Um, not so much an elephant in a room, but a thorny issue. Um, maybe not on the level of North Korea, but um, we have uh, panhandlers and homeless people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I've been at the meetings. Do you have any solutions or any ideas what we should do?
You know, um, a little over a year ago, I went to uh, the Colorado Municipal League, they have a yearly conference. And they had a segment on panhandlers. And of course, we know that by panhandling, it's, it's in the constitution, begging is protected.
Right.
Uh, I know that there was a meeting, was it last Saturday or Saturday before last, where they were talking about panhandlers and, and homeless people. Uh, I do know that there is a problem with a lot of these panhandlers on the corners, uh, cause they are impeding traffic. Is it possible that maybe that we could say that you have to stay not right on the corner, but maybe further away, maybe a hundred feet? I don't know. These are things that are going on in my mind. Uh, the best thing to do is if we can educate people not to give. If they're going to give, give to something like maybe the soup kitchen, uh, those other type of organizations. From what I understand is people have actually watched. And what they're saying is that it's not the local people that are giving. It's the people that are coming through Trinidad that are giving the majority of that money.
Oh, yeah.
So that seems to be the biggest problem. So if we could keep them from giving this money, a lot of these, a lot of those transients will probably move on.
Right. Um, I think it was Howard Lackey that spoke at council last year or whatever and said, you know, it's, it's a pretty good business they got going. Cause really they have cars and homes and things like that. One of the things that I observed last week at county commission meeting is we have a, uh, some people that live out in Model. And he said the people that are here begging are squatting out on their land. You know, and it's, they're going to court tomorrow and they ended up getting arrested when they called the sheriff's department. So uh, I'm not, I guess I'm chiming in here and, and talking to other people. I know that actually that the homeless problem is in, in begging is worldwide. It's, it's not just here.
No.
And it's not something that's gonna go away.
It's not because I'll tell you what, I've, I've, I've had to go to Denver multiple times since I became mayor. And I've noticed the amount of transients and beggars. Uh, I'm not sure if they're homeless, drug addicts, whatever have you. Uh, not necessarily right in the area of, of the capital, but in the blocks close to it. And they're just lining the streets. So it is a major problem. The thing is, is how many of these people are truly homeless? And how many are just because it's an easy dollar?
That, that was one of the things that Howard addressed. It's like, these guys are living in trailers and everything else and it, it's quite a system. I, I just remember uh, uh, in the early eighties when I came to Colorado, there was a minister, you know, preaching down in the, in the mall and they found his taxes and he was making fifty, sixty thousand dollars. Which is some, some pretty good money.
You hear all kinds of stories of people, uh, you know, the red can thing really drives me crazy of.
The red can, I know.
And if you, if you notice, you go up to Walmart and you see a guy that's sitting there and he'll have a red gas can. You go there tomorrow and there's another guy with another red, with another red gas can.
Right.
And you look across the street, let me, let me give you an example. Where was this? Just, where in heck was I? I think it was in Colorado Springs, that my wife and I were, were there. And we looked at, no, actually it was in Walsenburg, uh, just last weekend. And we sat there, we were waiting for my daughter because we, my grandson comes and we pick him up there. And it was interesting, there was these, this man and this woman walked across the street. And this is on that uh, parking area on the other side where, what is it? The A and W in Walsenburg is that. Anyway, the guys, the guy and the woman walk across the street. The guy in an RV pulls up on the gas station across. They all meet together there. They have a dog. They get in this big ol' RV and they take off. You know, so we sat there and watched them for a good fifteen, twenty minutes interact there.
Right.
So they're, they're driving this fancy RV, but they just came from begging in the street over here.
Maybe we chose their own careers.
I, I think we did. You know what they say is the average, so they, they say some of these people are getting like three hundred bucks a day.
And it's tax, it's tax-free.
Yeah, tax-free. How can we tax that?
I, I, I just, I just think, Phil, that it's a, I, I bring it out to ask people, you know, that are in for office, what are your solutions? My own take is I don't think we have a good solution.
There, I don't think there really is a good solution to this. Uh, the only good solution is to ask people to quit giving. But how do you do that? How do you get these people to understand that?
Yeah, and I, I know from um, one of my yoga classes was six-thirty in the morning until seven-thirty and we got a quarter to eight. And at one of the places where we were, when we got out there, the cars were lined up, you know, from out of state for the marijuana.
That's right.
So, and they're, like you say, they're probably the ones that are, that are donating. So, um, last, last question in this segment. Um, how much time um, have you devoted and will you devote to city council?
You know what? I'll tell you what, I, I, I sometimes I sit there and I calculate the amount of time and it's pretty hard to figure. I, I'm, I'm on a weekly basis, twenty to twenty-five hours a week. That's prepping for meetings, going, oh yeah, going to meetings, uh, sitting up, prepping, thinking. Uh, I wake up in the middle of the night thinking, okay, this is gonna happen, this could possibly happen. Traveling to Denver, traveling to Springs, uh, just meeting people, uh, calling me up, wanting to meet with me. Uh, yeah, I spend a good twenty to twenty-five hours a week. You know, it takes, it takes time and you have to be diligent enough to just say, this is what I wanna do. Cause if you don't have your mindset that this is exactly what you wanna do, wanna devote that time, you're not going to do a reasonable job.
Right. Well, excellent. Some, some interviews go longer, some go shorter. And so I'm conscious of, I don't want people to think that I'm speeding through things.
That's funny.
So it's just sometimes we go, we go longer. Okay. So we're gonna take a short break and then we're gonna come back. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tom Murphy.